Call our meeting to order, August 18th, 2025. It is 5:30 here at the Council Chambers City Hall in Ewell. Roll call, please.
Councillor Rosie.
Here.
Councillor Coivinnen.
Here.
Councillor Purpich.
Here.
Councillor Lilis.
Here.
Mayor Rowan.
Here. All right. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. We have a fun list of things to go through. We'll get started right away at the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to move?
So move. Support.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes for the city council meeting for August 4th to 25? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next up, approval for the agenda. Motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich.
Support.
Rosie. We have a few additions for everybody out there. Number seven will be a 60-day notice and MOU for $250 in lieu of the $1,500 payout on the retirement. And Jackie, do we need to add this letter that you put up here from YMCA?
Yes, please.
Okay. Number eight will be the YMCA request for land use. Are there any other additions, questions before we move forward? All right, all in favor with the two additionals, number seven and number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. We'll open up the floor for the public. Not tonight, that's okay, we're good. Perfect. Next up will be the consent of the agenda. We'll need approval for payroll from July 16th through the 31st of 25. Motion to move?
So move.
By Lilis.
Support.
Support by Coivinnen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. All right, we'll dive into our new business. First up is a request from the Public Access Television, Ewell Vail ISD 2909, to amend the amended joint powers agreement relating to the establishment of a Joint Cable Television Access Board. So, over the last few months, there's been some discussion. Well, take a step back, motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich.
Support.
Support by Rosie. Did you get your excited there, Steph? I can tell. Started shaking her legs at me. So as I was saying, there's been numerous conversations and Vail has backed out of the Public Access Television, Access Board, Joint Cable Television Access Board, leaving a few different problems. Number one, problem of having enough people to have a quorum because Vail's not sending people to those meetings anymore. Most, if not all of them this year, when I get the announcement that it's on date, ABC, it is always changed to a new date and sometimes then even changed again or a fourth time. And it is typically because of getting quorum. So they would like to adjust from four members to three members by taking Vail out of the equation, meaning that they are no longer a part of it, per their letter. Jackie, do you remember when that was? April, May, somewhere in there? Okay, when they said they were done and at that point, they also stated they were not going to be sending people to the meeting anymore or following through with their future payments.
Who's left on in commission? I mean Gilbert got out.
Gilbert is out, so this leaves the city of Ewell and it leaves the ISD 2909 Rockford School District. At this point, do we overshare, Jackie? Do you just let it all out? Please let it all out. ISD 2909, they currently, as part of the agreement, they give the Joint Cable Television Access Board a room where they can do filming and there is also another room there that's like a locked room or whatever, where they have their high-end equipment and whatnot in there. And we, we pay a percentage based off of how many homes have cable TV, not internet TV, but cable TV. We pay a portion or we pay a percentage because of that. So essentially with Vail falling out, the only money going into the joint cable is what the city of Ewell is giving. And unfortunately, it would not take long if we are the only ones paying into that for it to dry up and be done. We would pay just enough money for them to operate 12 months out of the year. If they had a hiccup or an issue with the equipment, there would be nothing to assist with. In our meeting, myself and Noel Schmidt, Superintendent of the School, were discussing the difference of what Vail pays. And it was discussed that we would each possibly pick up 50% of what Vail pays, which if I remember right, was $14,000 a year. So we each pick up $7,000 a year so that the cable board could continue to operate as it does.
Better get it and write it.
With that, I did not look at the, and I should have, that is my fault. It just kind of hit me. I should have watched the school board meeting to see how they voted on this. Did anybody by chance? Anybody, anybody? Nope, dang it, that's on me. I'd have a hard time believing that this didn't pass. But the whole idea here though is to get the okay for the verbiage to be changed so that they can go down to a quorum consisting of three so that they can conduct necessary businesses, pay their bills, et cetera.
Where would the three come from?
Right now it is, well, they need to have three, but it would be two between each, the city and the school. So three of those four would need to be there, so.
No, it's still have a couple of each.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that I've been at a bunch of their meetings, but typically at the first meeting I can get to and then when it changes two or three times, it just ends up at a time that doesn't work for me. But they're having just a hard time even paying their bills, paying their employees and whatnot because they can't meet quorum. So the other discussion was made to have the meetings during the middle of the day during the school year because then the teachers that are on this board will have a better likely of being there instead of being in the evenings or what have you, so. We are essentially being asked to vote on the idea of changing the quorum in section four to, from four to three. That is all that this is discussing, not the dollar amount, correct Jackie? So with that being said, I mean, it's a lot more information that was needed than what this is about, but this is asking us to change section four, the quorum amount from four members to three members so that they can proceed and do what's necessary to conduct their transactions as a business.
I don't, I don't see why we shouldn't just go ahead and make this change or agree to this change.
Okay.
I agree.
And again, this has nothing to do with the $7,000. That's a conversation for another day.
Another day.
So I'll then move forward with that.
Now, is this paid, our, when we pay in our share, is it paid at the first of the year? So do they have this money?
It's paid quarterly.
It is a budgeted item too, isn't it? That's what I thought.
So if, if Vail is, they withdraw on April 26th of 2026, that's their last date, are they going to continue to pay their share until this time?
No.
Because they're obligated?
Yeah. They're right, they're obligated to pay until they're done.
This is the same thing, I guess it happened when Gilbert had left too, that you have to give 364-day notice, which Vail did, stayed in that they weren't, but then they just, they were done effective immediately.
Well, and that's, and this runs the meetings and the school stuff. I mean, just so the people out here know what we're talking about, it's filming like the school board meetings?
So a lot of this stuff with the school is being filmed either by the students or another program. However, the Joint Cable Television Access Board has the rights, well, we all do, I guess, to take the information from where they have and put it on the Channel 12 site, put it on their website and things like that, their YouTube, so that it can all get out there. So that's what they're doing for the school, is just being another access board. And for us, correct, they're videoing whatever it is that we, we already know. So we're seeing it obviously from meetings like this, our town hall meetings.
Is it different in our meetings or that's what this is all about? I mean, I just have a question now. If, let's just say we said heck with that, would we still get our meetings on TV?
If we didn't let this go, at some point, they're not going to pay any bills. So who knows what happens?
Well, and that's what I want the people to know because they're going to say, why do you need them? You know, this is, as much as I dislike it, I mean, we have to keep it going. You know, I just, like I says, when we get to that point, it's going to be in writing.
Correct. Yep, this is just going to allow them to actually function as the group that needs to get things done.
To get through this year anyway.
Yep, yep.
I understand.
No further discussion? All in favor of allowing the proposed language change from, of section four of the quorum from four to three for the joint cable? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. All right. And anything further on that, we'll tackle that as it comes up. But that'll at least get them to meet here this next month and put some plans together. Next up is considering a quote for DEMO Genesis SL2 RAM e-force. I just love these subjects at times. Motion to move?
So move.
By Rosie.
Support.
Support by Lilis.
So they, they got a quote and they're going to get the, they talked about something else prior.
Radios.
They were going to give radios. They were going to give radios. Now they changed it this, I don't see any problem with this, changing it.
Just so they know that's what they're getting and, you know, they need the radios worse or they need this.
I think they prioritized and they said, they had the monies that were available and that this is something that would be more useful to the public.
And for the public to know that's the money they made.
And that's still coming out of that money that they made.
Still, a lot of the money, the fire department made from the fires that occurred this spring. So, you know, it's their money, they earned it.
It's just a change of product.
Change of product, that's.
And it's a nice product too.
Looks like it would work really well in a lot of situations.
And the group is working well with the budget too, knowing that they had the extra money in their own capital equipment budget to cover the rest of it. So makes it fairly easy on us, makes it hard for me to think who am I to question what they want to do there.
Yeah, we're not on the runs with them, so if that's what they need, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I'm not going to tell them what they need, they know what they need, they let us know.
Yeah, that's right.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the request for this product in lieu of the radios and the remainder of that money coming from their department capital equipment budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. All right, next up is Earn, Sick and Save Time Lead Benefit Policies and Updates. Motion to move?
So move.
Support by Lilis. Jackie, do you want to chime in on what you know exactly going on with this change?
Yes, so as an employer, I have to comply with legislative rules regarding earn, sick and save time. There were some changes and so I employed Don from Driver, who's folks on the end of Metcalfe, very thoroughly, and so we made some revisions and some letters to send out to people. You have to be compliant with some medical units to offer our people, so it just gets us into compliance based on Minnesota law.
And to make, to get this clear, the state makes the policy.
Make the law.
They pass it. And all of a sudden, a year later, they have to make changes? I mean, they didn't figure it out the first time?
They say it's their first change.
And then it, then it confuses everybody right down the line from the smallest town to the biggest metropolis we have in the state or whatever. And it just, it boggles my mind that you can't get this right the first time. They have more lawyers than we do certainly down there, forming these laws and these bills.
This isn't just obviously for cities and everything else. This is for every small business, every nonprofit. This is for everybody that's got an employee, so it's a real treat at work, that's for sure.
And now a poor, you know, a small business person trying to comply with the law has to get with his lawyer again, bill 18 hours to change all his policies and get his policies up to date. It's ridiculous, but let's, let's get our, let's get our portion fixed up and ready to go. Was that a rant?
It was, it was a little bit of a rant there. We let him have it, we let him have his moment, it's fine, he feels better. Is there any further discussion on that at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. It is very frustrating. It was really fun when it came off the first time because nobody had an idea what we were talking about.
Yeah.
All right, next up is notices regarding for full change of bi-weekly paid periods. Motion to move?
So move.
Coivinnen.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Jackie, what brought this upon?
So interestingly, what brought it upon is when employees retire or give us mid-June, when we calculate that last bit of pay for them, I said back then, I said, hmm, if we're paying people a salary, they're working a different number of hours per payroll period, you don't really get paid for all of your hours until that last payroll period. Also, if we have a leave period which adds eight hours of pay, you still get your salary for $2,088. So it's all about finding fairness and equity in workplaces and making sure that they get paid for all of their hours worked.
This is what happens when you have to ride in your car to and from home and start thinking of things?
I do think of these things.
Seems fair. I'm not going to lie, when I read the first page, I was kind of taken back and as I started going through it, I'm like, well, I get what's being said here, but I didn't know what spurred it, I guess, but okay. Did anybody, did anybody have any questions or concerns on that at all?
We have an inkling all the employees might see a change of this type positively or negatively?
Well, they're certainly not going to be harmed. They're going to get their money sooner than later because there are going to be 26 paid periods instead of 24. And so at the end of their tenure with this, under whatever circumstances they leave, they will be assured to maintain every hour of their income. Change is hard for everybody, but I think it's, I don't think there's a downside other than that they get their money sooner.
Draws questioning the math. He's carrying the one, he's like, I don't know. This is, these are the small things that we're catching as we move through, then glorious to us. Any further discussion or questions at all? Anything you'd like to add, Jackie?
Nothing.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. All right, next up is a call for bids for a new parking lot at the former school campus. We have a motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich.
Support.
Support by Rosie. So Alan, what do you think is going on? Do you think we've got a slew of people that are going to be begging for, begging for this job? Are we going to be crossing our fingers for one?
So that's a loaded question. I'm not 100% sure that we have been a few things out here just in the last month and there has been a high interest in it. I know there's one or two that are still all for bids currently and not getting any phone calls as well too. So it's, they don't typically look at them till the last week and get bids. If it's an attractive project or timing's ready, they'll submit on it, I guess.
I don't know, you're calling your part from when you worked here last time, you did a better job of getting us through things. I don't know. Come on, a little more, a little more positivity in that.
The prices have been competitive on the, or last couple have all been under the budgeted amounts. So that's positive in my opinion, like we're seeing some prices finally drop down a little bit, not continue to creep up, so I think that's a good thing.
All right. With that being said, does anybody have any further discussion on putting out bids to have that parking lot?
They need to at least have bids.
That is a true statement, sir. All right, all in favor moving forward for bids on the parking lot at the former school campus? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Thank you very much. All right, next up is number six, ordinance number 88, second series regulating antennas and towers, permit and application fees. Motion to move?
So move.
Support.
Purpich, Coivinnen, discussion is open. So on the, on this, you put you're inquiring whether you want to establish these fees?
I wonder why I would say that? So it's, it's a zoning function and currently in order to get the zoning permit, there is a fee. So I didn't want to assume the fee.
Oh.
So I thought I got you.
I got you.
So we really need a record, you know, if somebody comes in and applies, we need to know if there's an application fee and a permit. So we can react and respond accordingly.
I got you, okay.
For all intents and purposes, this doesn't include a dish or anything like that. It's for the antenna for radios and that kind of stuff.
Antenna, yeah.
It's going to be a fee.
There's going to be a fee. The whatever meant when.
Can we take it case by case?
It requires some staff time to permit the project, so.
Location, location and height are two of the things that have to be discussed, right? As far as a fee for each?
So you have an application fee and/or a permit. So you can have two fees, application and permit. Or in all cases, the two fees that we do is you can take an application to a landlord and determine your permit. And what they want to do is that we can find this, so. I don't expect there to be a lot of these, but I don't know why to do this after it goes past then.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor of allowing if there is a permit or an application fee for us to continue to move forward? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. All right, number seven.
May I excuse me, so I need the dollar amount. I need to know how much the fee is.
That is, that we will allow you to walk to?
Yes, or you say it's flat, you think the arbitrary, you just got to figure it out. So.
What is a standard number for other things in this same wheelhouse?
When you go to charge increases for other zoning types of things.
It's a much more significant project than what we typically deal with.
But my thought here.
I would think it would be reasonable, $250 to apply and another $250 for the permit.
But that's not for the other zoning ones, this is.
No, just for, just for this strictly.
Yeah, okay.
And did that number come from something that you utilized via your Google machine or?
No, no.
Passed?
That kind of took me a little bit by. I don't know where it came from.
I'm being very specific here, he says.
Neither, but if you, if you take a run-of-the-mill salary of say $50 an hour, you could have five hours easily tied up into the research and follow-up and so forth. So that's kind of where my head was at with the $250.
Gotcha. A break-even number.
Yep, pretty much.
Well, I appreciate you doing the math, that was nice of you.
Didn't even use my watch for that one.
I can charge this extra. Any thoughts on that?
I don't like break-even.
So what are you, what are you suggesting?
I'll go with the $250.
Oh, you don't like break-even?
I did that for the laugh.
Okay, thanks. That didn't feel the same.
That's fine with me, yeah.
Okay. If this is something we're able to revisit as in the future, if we are seeing this happening and we find that we are losing on this, are we able to revisit and then change that number?
Absolutely.
Then with that being said, I think $250 is a safe place to start.
Start.
And then we can grow from there as this grows, if it grows. With that being said, then we will amend more or less that number six, the all in favor of permitting the application fees at $250 per? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on the amendment. Now can I do number seven, Jackie?
It seems appropriate.
Perfect, all right, number seven, and if anybody just came in, seven and eight were both added later on the agenda than when it was written. But number seven is a 60-day notice and MOU at $250 in lieu of the $1,500 payout for life insurance?
At retirement.
At retirement. Motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich. Supported by?
Support.
Floor is open. So per prior conversations, we're no longer to get the $1,500 paid up life insurance policy at retirement after numerous places of shopping, it just is something that's not there. So in lieu of that, we'd like to replace that with a cash out amount of $250. Is there anything more that you need on that, Jackie?
I don't, I just need your approval since I was sent this morning.
All right, so she's going to send out for the approval on that and we will see what's accepted or not accepted in that respect. So I thank you for the previous conversation on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Be interested to see how that one comes back. All right, number eight, again, this one's not in your packet either, it came in late. Motion to move on the YMCA's request for land use?
So move.
By Purpich. Supported by?
Support.
Rosie. She's really pulling teeth tonight. Okay. Discussion is open. So I did receive a voicemail about a week ago and I was hoping to just mention it briefly in one of our discussions at a workshop, but the YMCA is looking for land to utilize for their, for their soccer program. And they're aware of our abundance of land that we currently have as we're working on getting things developed and they were curious if it's something that they would be able to utilize with all their soccer families, et cetera. The first thing my mind went to when I thought of this was we had this same conversation at a workshop a month ago regarding the school's use of those pieces of property for football. And that, that went nowhere. So I had a hard time calling them back immediately and just giving an answer. I thought it was worth the conversation, but that's where my mind went right away is that we weren't willing to just let the school utilize the properties. Is it something we want to think of twice for a youth soccer program? Are we going to be searching for funds from them as well to utilize that land? Do we just forego this because it is city land and not meant to be for?
We have not heard from the school at all about how much of that property they want to use for the fall, Jerry?
I haven't heard anything yet, no.
We've heard nothing from them.
No, last year they asked for some, for some time on that land, but they never ended up utilizing any, so.
So we don't, we have no notification this year, whether they're going to use it or not?
Nothing as of now. I asked for, as the board asked me to, I asked for a written request of what exactly they'd be looking for so that we had something tangible that we could vote on one way or the other and I have, I have not received that back. And it was a, it was a pretty open, not just. And it was a, it was a pretty open, not just for obviously this fall and the land, but also what their thought was for the gym. So I don't know if it's because they haven't had an opportunity to put it all together yet, or if there's no interest. I don't know that, and I can easily follow up on that as well. However, land and the gymnasium use, I was here at two separate things. And I would assume football's already started, so they probably have already put together a plan regarding that, but I don't wanna speak for them, I'm not really sure. Perhaps the junior high sports haven't started yet. But this would be for the YMCA out of Duluth, where they believe they're gonna have a handful of kids from September eighth through October twenty-fifth that will be looking to play, play the game of soccer and they're looking for a field to play it in.
And they were talking about what type of insurance and stuff do they need? So I mean, I like that part about it because they don't just wanna come and use it and not pay nothing. You know, the insurance and stuff is all money. And I don't see us putting hoses on it in this, in that time.
It's just a yearly thing, like just this year they're looking at. They're gonna put their own nets, they're gonna take care of, as far as grass cutting, I'm not sure if they'll take care of that. And it's only two weeks, isn't it, or three weeks, how long is it?
No, it's seven or eight weeks.
Month and a half.
It's a month and a half.
Sorry.
Yeah.
What's that with, what's that with calendar?
But no, they're willing to do everything they need to do on the property to keep it up. It's just a matter of what do we wanna do? Do we want to open up that opportunity for them to go up there and paint the lines and put up their stuff and play it? Or does that make us uncomfortable that that's what's happening? So, either way.
I enjoy driving by and watching the people play pickleball, so I'd probably enjoy just as much to go watch kids play soccer.
Yeah, there's plenty of room up there, even if.
What reason would we have for them not to?
No, there is none. There is no reason.
If they meet the requirements, insurance and everything. And if there is a nominal fee or something that you want to work out or whatever. But it would be contractual, each contract's different, so what we have with the school doesn't have any bearing on what we have with the YMCA as far as contract. As to what they paid, for how long, and blah, blah, blah. But I'm all for putting kids on that field, it says in here sixty, seventy families from around the area that participate in that.
YMCA, they do a lot of things.
I just think that's a good, that's a good thing to have in.
Maybe down the line, they might wanna use our basketball courts and something and pay a little monetary.
As they develop, maybe other lands will come available, who knows?
I'm just looking at the school.
It's a little late in the season for the school to be calling us, maybe.
I just don't wanna put any added pressure on Jerry's troops over there. If he's got them sweating and flogging away already. Seen them boys do a good job for you.
I think we should just go ahead with it. As far as charging them, I, you know, I don't know what that would entail.
I, where I stand on it is I just have a really hard time letting them utilize it when we told the school, you know, we want. There's more information here than what the school gave us, yes. However, we were looking to the school to charge them for usage of the property. So to turn around and then look at the YMCA and say, no charge, I, I find that a little bit disrespect to Rock Ridge. So I mean, I think we need to just find, I know, that was me that said that. But I think that we just have to come up with something fair to the grounds of what we.
Okay, let me ask Jerry, what do we charge Rock Ridge hourly rate?
Four.
Didn't they have an agreement with us?
Just say the baseball fields. For baseball fields, I honestly, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, I can't remember. I know we charged them at the hippodrome, everything else, but.
Yeah, how much was the hippodrome?
The hip was a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour.
So, and that we have to keep? We gotta keep that cooled and everything, they were still getting it for a hundred and twenty-five an hour. So I mean, if you could check on that to see what.
I mean, when a school uses a golf course, they pay nothing?
No, that's in the facility use plan too.
Okay.
Or agreement, I should say. So they're paying something, I can't tell you exactly what they're paying for those fields.
I guess if we configure that price out and put it at that, I mean, that way nobody can get.
I'd be more comfortable with the number like for the golf course and stuff like that, because it's not a building, it's not a facility.
Well, it can't be the same price as the hippodrome, because you know, it's gonna be cheaper than that.
And there's no way you're gonna get a YMCA to be able to operate at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. They're gonna have a couple nights a week of kids out there playing soccer.
Are they gonna have satellite facilities for the kids?
That's a logistic that should be looked into for sure.
I mean, they, you know, and there is no water, no pumps, no nothing. So everything would have to be provided by the coaches and or the YMCA as far as keeping the kids hydrated and stuff.
Kinda wish you had one of them here so we could answer our questions.
That's it. So if we can get a letter to them or a note to them right away explaining that, you know, maybe they can come up with a paramount of money that they're willing to spend. How many hours are they gonna be using it?
Yeah, maybe they only have so much in their expense account. Let us know what they can give.
What I can do is, Jerry doesn't do anything all day long. He told me that earlier today.
I called him twice, you know.
Yeah, but, well, he took a nap during our meeting today, so that was fine. But, no, if, if Jerry can tackle what that number was for golf course or whatever, I will reach out to this group in the morning for the number that was left behind for me. Get some of these answers, and we can discuss them tomorrow at our workshop. Are we able to do that? Technically, no, huh?
You guys could maybe authorize a simple, I mean, simple, facility use period? That maybe the buildings and grounds, maybe just a reason of that nation.
So you want us to do tonight?
Not that I'm gonna bring it back, so tomorrow you could do.
I just, I would like to know how many nights they wanna use it, how many hours they wanna be on the field.
That's the big thing, I mean, the school, you have the golf course.
If they wanna be there one night a week.
You need their schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, how much do you wanna use it?
Yeah. I don't wanna charge them out so it doesn't make sense for them, but at the same time.
Couldn't have charged them all that much for the baseball fields. And this is technically, this is their own equipment, all they want is the land. I mean, it's not like.
Basically, that's it.
And they said they'd do some of the maintenance.
Put up their own nets, take care of their own field.
Put their own lines down.
But you have to also look at, they do have to have bathrooms for the kids.
That's, that's.
I mean, that wouldn't be enough.
Yeah.
No, in all fairness, this is.
We need more information.
This is the same amount of information, maybe a little bit more than what the school offered us. And we let that just dangle out there too. So, I would hate to move forward, and if I have to move myself to postpone this until we have more information, I'm willing to do that. And if I'm gonna take the extra step and find this, I'll also do the same thing with the school.
Well, you know, if you're willing to do that, we can also always have a special meeting on it, I'm pretty sure. Which one would take long anyway? You don't just go through this?
Yeah. I just would like a bit more information before we say, let's charge them twenty-five dollars an hour and whatever, just making stuff up and then find out we're not even on the same page with them. And the school finds that they resented it because they asked first, so. Let's, I'll do my due diligence in the morning tomorrow and go from there. What's the word you want me to use on this?
Table?
Table it? Okay, we'll do that. Is there any other further discussion before it's tabled? No? Do we need to make a motion to table it, or can we just table it, Jackie?
You have motion to consider it, correct?
Yep.
So yes, you have a motion, you can say the motion is to table it, and then just vote on it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we table it until we learn what they're, what they're gonna use it for and make sure we have bathrooms and just to dot all the i's and cross the t's.
What are they willing to provide it, and then let us know what that is.
Okay, motion by McCoivin for table. Support. Support by Alilis for table. Any further discussion? All in favor of tableing this, if further information is given, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Table it for now and tackle it soon. Next up is our council reports. Did you guys do paper, rock, scissors, see who's gonna go first today?
I really don't have much. I had an airport meeting, which I didn't make it to because I was at another meeting. And Jim was there, so he could talk about that. And a rock board meeting, I was informed that it's our turn to plow. And we're still working out some boundaries. And otherwise, everything's business as usual.
The airport meeting, we met last, last week, we're still hunting for a airport manager. We, on Wednesday, we will be interviewing three possible managers for the job of managing the airport. Which is gonna, you know, includes the grass cutting, snow removal, runway clearance, making sure everything's up to date out there and make sure all the equipment's running. So we're gonna have to do that. Also, there was a SNAP rule, we are in the process of buying a loader for the airport, and again, we're looking for an American-made product. And the one vendor backed out because he couldn't provide that. The other vendor needed to get more information so that we could forward it for the grant application for the loader, so that's being processed and it's going forward. We have a new plow truck that is actually sitting at the Ford garage here in town. And it's got all the bells and whistles on it for plowing snow out at the airport. We've had some issues with the rental fee of the hangars. That's been resolved between two parties, so that's gonna work out fine for us. We are looking into getting a courtesy car out there. One of the people that own. So we have to work out a deal with the guy that wants to buy the courtesy car. He's gotta get it all shipped, shipped, ready, ready to go. But a lot of people that fly into the airport are wondering if we have a courtesy car out there, saying go into town and do whatever and come back, so we're kinda looking at that. Rec board, we're looking at Parks and Commission Board, we're looking at benches and we were ordering some, right, Jerry?
Yep, we ordered four.
Four benches. Pickleball court and tennis court and someplace else too, ain't it?
Yeah, somebody else is ordering those, but.
Yeah, yeah. So we've been busy there, we're what else did we discuss at that meeting, Jerry, the park issue?
Well, we just talked, go ahead.
We talked about the naming of the, the park, the, our veterans' park.
Yeah, they considered, they wanted to discuss renaming it, because a lot of people think it's for veterans. And as the council discussed, they wanted, interested in changing the name.
Yeah.
So we got back to them on that.
Yeah, and things are going pretty well out there. There's gonna be a craft fair out there on the weekend after Labor Day?
Yeah, I believe so.
Be a craft fair out there on the weekend after Labor Day. And I think that was about it for, for right now.
Our HRA meeting will be scheduled, or is scheduled for this Wednesday at three P M. For those who are interested. Did you want me to give any report on the committee seeking to replace or to establish a new administrator?
Jackie, see any reason why we can't?
I mean, not in depth, just a general brush. We are in the final stretch. We started with a number of applications, went through the rating process and the interview process, and a second interview process. At a point where we are comfortable that we have at least two very good candidates for the position. And we hope to get the things that we need to get done before we were to offer the job out officially. To get all that stuff in place before we get the final piece in place to bring to the rest of the council to get your final approval. So we're real close, and I expect would be a stupid thing of me to, to give you a timeline, but we're much closer than we have been. You could almost reach out and grab it right now, so. That's status of that committee.
It was quite the process, lots of quality applicants and lots of good conversations, but we've got to the point where we are and it's exciting. So we'll see what, see what the next few weeks carry out for us.
As Ryan stated, that our meeting is set for Wednesday for the HRE. But I did have the pleasure of attending a special R A M S meeting. I learned more about the position that some of these mining companies are in due to the sulfate regulations. And it's something that we're going through here with our gray water processing plant type deal. Where the number that they want them to get to is actually unrealistic, and they sort of know that. That meeting was well-attended, there was two state senators, two state representatives. And there was no seats actually were available as far as the audience. But it came right down to that Keytac is what, the ones that are getting hammered right now. And they're having a real hard time of, of making a go of it, and they've discussed different processes. It's all about the wild rice and the downed water. But they're up against it, the M P C A was there. And there was no holds barred with some of the questions that were asked and for them to explain themselves. And with the state senate and the reps there, they're very knowledgeable, of course, on this subject. And they had them squirming pretty good. But basically, they're under orders from the government to now make this stuff happen regardless of, this is the number you have to get to. The Keytac's at one twenty-seven or something, and they want them to get to ten, and it's sort of impossible. The numbers they put for this reverse osmosis procedure and stuff made Jerry's numbers look small. Yes, very small. But it was very, it was these mining companies are in a lot more trouble, they see Midtac's the next one that's gonna, and they got numbers that are even, are even higher, so. There's problems and we're not safe at all. So let's see, can get some legislation, get it changed. There's gonna be, there's gonna be some action in the mining industry especially. And to try to make the sulfate number of ten. Nobody sees it happening, not even the M P C A. But they got their five-year plans, like we got, five years make this mark, five years make that mark. Yeah, five-year plans. Anyway, it wasn't, it was, it was pretty, there was some tension in the room for quite a while too. But the pizza sort of eased that. Yeah, special meeting, they didn't have time to get it catered, they just got pizza. No, it was great though, but it's very interesting, I didn't realize that environmental protection agencies had so much power over the actual livelihood of what we do up here, the backbone of what we do.
And they don't care.
Well, these people actually sort of were concerned, but they were like, I was only following orders, you know, that old stain. I was only following order, this is what we're doing, we're supposed to make this happen now, and so this is what we're. But these legislators that were there, they got some plans, you know. It's a tricky business, you lads. It's a tricky business, you lads, for sure. Anyway, that's about it. Chicken's almost done, so.
Chicken's almost done, got it. Um, yeah, I've, I've been a part of a slew of different meetings, I guess. None of them are really in a report about at this moment, uh, but hopefully I'll come in petition here in the near future and share with all of them. There is a workshop tomorrow for anybody that really wants and loves to hang out with our city council. We invite you to be here tomorrow at two o'clock. That's when all the fun really happens. If you thought that Mr. Purpich got excited today, you can swing on by, you see him. Um, we are aiming for our Big Truck Night to be September twenty-fifth on Main Street here. Um, I am working with both Chief and Draw here to set up exactly what we wanna do and whatnot on that street, and I'll talk more with them about it in the next week or two. But for the people out there, September twenty-fifth, we're looking to invite you down to Main Street. We're gonna have, hopefully, big equipment that the city has, that your tax dollars help pay for. We'll have police equipment out there, fire equipment out there. Hopefully, some local businesses will be able to show up with some of their equipment to show you what, what they have, and to kind of announce that they're in town, and then also food, food trucks as well. Nobody's ever against a food truck, I mean, I have a hard time walking by one without at least stopping by to check it out and then purchase. So that is aiming for the twenty-fifth, more information to come, and then we're also gonna chat about our upcoming Town Hall meeting, which, Jackie, did it sound like we're aiming for the eighteenth? Is that the way things started, the doors started banging on?
Well, I think you all sent an email that confirmed September seventeenth date for the Iron Range.
Yes.
Date of the range, so I don't know what other day you guys can figure out.
So the Iron Range, meaning that Mr. Cabina's putting on through the I triple Y B, is on the seventeenth. Um, and I just would rather not tackle something she's got going on that same evening, out of respect for her event, and then also that we can try to be able, if you'd like to be.
Yeah.
Uh, so the eighteenth of September would, is the tentative date that we look at for the Town Hall meeting. Does anybody see any reason why that, that would not work for them?
Kind of a long way away.
So anything on your list, is what you're saying?
I'll be there.
It's on a Friday, is it?
Yeah, I deliberately did it on a Friday, no, it's on a Thursday. It's on a Thursday. Learned my lessons. Um, with our goal of that Town Hall to obviously open the floor up for anybody who has thoughts or concerns, talk to us, but also for us to do a lot of catching up to you guys on a lot of the things that you're seeing that are being done behind the scenes that sometimes we forget to mention, whether it be, uh, the website, or the development on the properties, and different things like that. So lots of good conversation that will come of that, so feel free to join us. It would be, do we usually do five-thirty or six o'clock there? I think we do six, don't we?
I have to, I don't recall, but it feels like six o'clock.
We'll do, we'll do six o'clock, it'll be six o'clock on the eighteenth. And there'll be a flyer out for that as well, and, and your water utility bill, and we'll try to get a reminder out regarding Big Truck Night too, so. If we can, uh, see the public come out and enjoy Big Truck Night with us, this Friday, there is the corn feed car show down on Main Street, so if you're into classic cars or just corn on the cob, come on down and check that out, and do the Town Hall meeting, we're open to everybody to come join us on the eighteenth, so.
In, in the interest of meetings, uh, remember last meeting that we moved the date of our first meeting in September to the second?
Correct.
So September second will be the next council, council meeting.
Yep. That'll be same place, same time, just Tuesday. All right. With that being said, Chief, anything on your mind?
No, sir.
Your new squad car looks good out there. I like it when the lights aren't behind me, so, looks good there. All right, can we just skip Draw?
Oh, God.
Jerry, what's on your mind?
Uh, I just wanted to give you a quick, quick update on Ely Lake Water Line that we're installing from shortstop to the airport. Um, the contractor's getting close to doing the tie-in. Uh, the valve to shut off for that tie-in is broke, so we can't get it off, so we've been working the last, well, three days, four days on this, trying to... And we've been uncovering valves and trying those, and nothing works, so. Uh, long story short, we may have to hire a company out of the cities that come, and they put in a live valve with the water on, so it's gonna cost a little bit.
Of course it is.
And there's the smirk, wow, like you're at the kitchen table.
No, I'm not happy about it, but, you know, and maps are never completely right. You know, we found a lot of valves that we didn't even know we had, but they won't shut off this line to the airport, so. We may have to have this company come up, and they do charge, but, um, we'll get it done and get that tie-in done, and we can get, uh, move on with that water line.
It's just extending the timeline a little bit?
Uh, yeah, it kinda holds back a little bit, uh, not a whole lot.
Done before deer season yet, Jerry?
I'm hoping, yeah, yeah, should be. And the landscaping, you know, they have to do all the landscaping, but they have everything pretty much tied in, it's just waiting to get the main line tied in, and a little bit more work out there, and we'll get that done.
Perfect. Then we won't go out there every six months with a patch kit.
Exactly, hopefully not.
So, that's what we were doing, so.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alan, anything on your mind?
Nope, Jerry kinda hit the topic that I was gonna bring up, so.
Sorry.
That's the last thing, Jerry. That's all I was gonna update on.
Do you, uh, foresee there to be a timeline for that to be a good start?
For...
Based off of waiting for quotes, et cetera?
For the parking lot? So we have to, because of the price, it's expected to be north of a hundred seventy-five thousand. Bidding process, which I was just looking at my calendar, which could put us to bid, bring around mid-September, um, if it got posted as soon as possible here.
Okay.
So we'd put a, that with a substantial completion of gravel for some point this fall there.
Okay. And my other question I add to you is, if we are to move forward with anything on different parts of that property, do we, do you feel that we need to do more of that same testing you did over that parking lot?
If there's gonna be structures, uh, especially like multi-story structures, apartment buildings, that type of thing, absolutely. Um, it doesn't matter if there was, uh, something previous there or not, um, and then in any of the future road areas, it'd be a wise, wise thing to consider doing, um, if there is, uh, plan of that whole site or the whole more side of the site, if we were bringing somebody back in to do some testing, we'd probably wanna look at all the areas in one shot, rather than having them come two, three different times for a little, you know, we're doing something here, doing something there. It'd be, in my opinion, a, a way to make sure what you're spending there lasts as long as it possibly can in case there's a pocket of material that wasn't compacted well, or there's some bad soils somewhere left on that site, and we can hopefully try to identify some of that stuff ahead of time, rather than it be a surprise, "Look what we found."
Okay, thank you very much. Jackie, anything on your mind? Wonderful, as we've been going, just been adding things to the workshop, though, even though you said no, my number eleven, no. I wanna schedule a little bit more time tomorrow. Um, so with that being said, if any, anybody else has their mind clear of everything, I will bring this meeting to an end, thank you.